Mayor Kahler.
Here.[3.29][3.29](Laughter).
You corrected that, I guess it was bad luck or something, eh?[8.61][8.61](Laughter).
Okay, tonight Commissioner Abraham has graciously agreed to do the invocation. Thank you, and pledge of allegiance, Commissioner Galt, if you'll do that for us.
My Father in heaven, we thank you so much for this wonderful day. We thank you for the opportunities that you put in front of us. Father, we ask that we continue to try to reflect your character. Those that among us who are going through whatever they're going through, and that is not known to us, our charge is to only treat them with respect and kindness. These things we ask in issue's name. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the Father.
To the Father. And to this republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I can clash with you. Sorry. I feel like I clash with Tammy somewhat. Okay, we'll go on to motions. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the notice of call meetings for Tuesday, March 31st, 2015 be received and filed.
Second. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Under municipal orders, Commissioner Galt, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order repealing municipal order numbers 1035 and 1714, and establishing a new policy and guidelines for providing economic incentives to qualified projects locating within the boundaries of the city of Paducah, McCracken County be adopted.
Second.
City Manager?
Thank you. As a follow-up to the citizen survey that was conducted almost three years ago now, a committee, a target committee was established to review and make recommendations on the city's future role in economic development. The development of this order that's before you tonight was the outcome of discussions of that committee and input from numerous other sources. The city uses, among other statutes, uses, along other statutes, ordinance, and policies, municipal order 1714 to establish thresholds for the use of incentives used by the city through its partner agency, Paducah Economic Development. That order was passed on March of 2013. It replaced a previous order that directed much of the same policy. The existing order that we have for city policy and economic development is minimal in nature, and I think we have struggled at times with that. And it's for that reason and others that we sought to craft a more complete, a more, perhaps, prescriptive order involving both the purpose, the mechanics, and the process that the city would endeavor to follow in its decision-making regarding financial incentives for economic development. So this order before you tonight seeks to bring greater definition to the appropriate use of financial incentives and a more logical process for evaluating proposals. I'd like to hit some of the highlights for you, and we have tonight, from the committee, I want to first recognize Commissioners Wilson and Galt, who served on that committee, a number of staff persons as well, Rick Murphy, John Perkins, Steve Doolittle, are here tonight. Also with us is Scott Darnell, our relatively new president of Paducah Economic Development, who has, this was probably the first thing I talked with Scott about after we got together, and he has been an active participant in the, what I would call, the refinement and finalization of this policy for the last several months, so we're very happy for that. I'd again like to express a few of the highlights from this policy. I don't want to sound disjointed here, but I think there are some significant statements throughout it. In terms of purposes and the whereas, Paducah seeks to improve quality of life by increasing income of its residents, and in that regard, the city of Paducah seeks to reduce the rate of poverty through purposeful investment in job creation. And further, the city of Paducah and its economic development partners strategically will employ methods and resources to attain success in those and other areas. The city of Paducah considers creation of adequately paid jobs for the citizens of Paducah and the expansion of the tax base to be a fundamental governmental interest. The city's objective is to enhance quality of life, and the city's goal is, goals include population growth, long-term economic growth, and employment opportunities for its citizens. It will be the policy of the city to reserve its highest financial incentives for projects that combine the best attributes of the expansion or creation of skilled jobs, pay, and benefits, and capital investment. While the city recognizes the potential significance of grants and loans in this policy, it is recognized in that regard and understood that such will be available only upon determination that financial priorities and resources permit their use. As was stated in the commission's recent writing to the Sun, the city's primary role in promoting economic vitality in Paducah, promoting economic development, is associated with quality of life. But this policy expands upon that to recognize the value, complementary value, to that of occasionally providing economic cash incentives in accordance with this policy. The goals of the policy are many, including assisting in the expansion of existing businesses and industries, assisting in new business startups, recruiting targeted out-of-state companies, reducing industries that employ high-skill jobs, and retaining businesses and industries that pay well and employ high-skill jobs. With respect to qualifications, I'll name just a few. That pretty much the whole policy is written around. With respect to individual projects that would be brought forward for consideration for city financial incentives, any proposed project must newly create a minimum of 10 full-time jobs with beginning salaries that are not less than 10% of the per capita income of the U.S. Census Bureau for McCracken County. That is not including benefits. Where benefits are concerned, we will restate a provision of the current policy that requires a minimum financial participation of 50% of the cost of a health plan on the part of the employer. It's also required at a minimum that a company, in order to qualify, would make a capital investment in land, buildings, leases, so on and so forth, of at least $500,000 over The primary component of financial incentives that the city would continue to rely on would be tax credits. That would be payroll tax credits that we oftentimes do in partnership with the state of Kentucky through a program called KEDFA. Up to 25% of a prospect's taxable investment in a project could be recovered over a negotiated term through payroll tax credits over a period of time not to exceed 10 years. The policy goes on to specify procedure and process that the current policy is quite devoid of with respect to the origination of a request, the role of PED, what it is that PED is expected to provide the city with, and then how we go back, liaison back with PED on the process of the city commission receiving a request and making a decision on it. Importantly, there's also a provision in here where the city and PED jointly assume responsibility and some role in establishing and ensuring compliance with accounting require, excuse me, reporting requirements on the part of any company that receives financial assistance back to the city for that which the company would pledge to create, whether it be a number of jobs, the wage that is projected, the benefit package, the amount of capital improvements, so on and so forth. So this agreement is predisposed to, or makes a strong statement, that compliance with the terms of any agreement that the city enters into will be monitored and enforced, if you will. So with that said, I would invite Steve and Scott to make any further comments they would like to make. Otherwise, there are several committee members here tonight that can answer any questions that the commission might have.[627.41][627.41](Applause).
Well, thank you for the opportunity for me to be here. I always like to come when I'm not asking for something, so it's great to be here without asking for something. But, you know, the importance of incentives in economic development, you know, moving clear, nobody likes it. You know, Walmart doesn't like selling things at a loss, neither does grocery stores, but it happens. And incentives started in the late 1800s. I think Alexander Hamilton offered a tax incentive to move a plant from one side of the city to the next, so I'm not sure which party he was in, so, but somebody started it. But, you know, at the end of the day, it's a necessary evil in economic development, and when you use it, especially with taxpayer dollars, how do you protect the taxpayer dollars? And how do you get the most out of your return? And a good policy is where you begin with that. Policies in economic development are not the exception, they're actually more of the norm. Any site selection consultant would call me, the first thing they do is ask for policies, because the majority of all communities have them. If you're operating without policies, how are you responsibly using taxpayer dollars? So Jeff and the staff has done a great job on this, and we've been involved in that discussion. But it does five key things that I like about the document, is one, is it stimulates investment versus compensates investment. You can incentivize a bad deal. If you give more than you get back, you shouldn't do it. In the private sector, if you lose money, you need to stop selling that good or service, or you'll be out of business. So you can incentivize a good deal. Incentives only make good deals better. And if you can't differentiate the way on that with an incentive, you don't need to be doing anything. It's rather better to make a, not make a decision at all than make a bad one with public-sector dollars, in my opinion. So this stimulates investment, it doesn't compensate investments. If they want to come to Paducah and the waterway is important to them, then there's a premium, they'll pay for that whether we incentivize it or not. So this document and this policy differentiates it, or stimulate investment, not compensating for it, and that's important. The second thing, there's provisions to make it performance-based, and that means they create the jobs, they get the return, and they get the incentive. The best, most competent incentive plans out there are performance-based. You get your money when you perform. Clawbacks happen in legal agreements, but getting something from nothing's tough, and a lot of times, companies leave communities whether they're incentivized or not. So this provision and this policy gives us a way to create performance-based incentives across multiple industries, and that's positive. The other thing is it's a baseline to start an honest, two-way discussion of what's available. The best negotiation is when both sides feel good about the deal. If one side feels they've got too much and the other side resents that, it's a bad thing in economic development. We don't want to make investments in companies for two years, three years, we want to make them for a long term. A good negotiation is when both sides feel good about the deal. And you got to start somewhere. The companies want everything, and we want to give as little as possible. You know, how do you meet in the middle? A good policy starts an honest discussion of where that incentive discussion should begin, and that's important for a policy. The other thing is flexible. We would never have a document that included every opportunity that could occur in this community. So this agreement's a baseline, but there's flexibilities if we feel there's something where the return outweighs the investment, and it's good for the citizens of Paducah and McCracken County, and if it's good for the community, the flexibilities in this document for allow us to look at that investment on a case-by-case basis, but still keep the provisions that we're stimulating, not compensating this deal, and that's important. And the last thing, it gives us the framework to protect the public sector's investment, and that's the most important thing when we're considering public-sector dollars. You don't have endless money, you're not the federal government, you're a local government, but at the end of the day, protecting the private, the public sector's dollars is the most important thing when it comes to investing in economic development deals. How do we show the return? How do we meet the needs of the community? But at the same times, how do we make a wise and sensible investment to achieve the goals of the community? So five key provisions, a lot of thought's been in that, this process, way before I got here, but it's a great document, it gives me the flexibility to be successful, but it also gives me the confidence that we're making wise decisions when we're communicating with companies on behalf of the public sector's investment. So thank you for the opportunity, thanks for the staff's hard work, and I'd love to answer any questions if I could.
I'd just like to comment that the five things that Scott mentioned really make this a values-driven document, based on a sound philosophy, but it's written around several values there, and that's multiple values that explain it, defend it, sort of define it, but that's contrasted with a single-value approach of creating jobs and throwing the money and hoping it sticks in the right place. So I think this is much, much better thought out because of those values that were at the forefront, I think, of the thinking all along, and I want to recognize again Steve and John for, if you look at the last page, there's the four quadrants that sort of illustrate the connectivity between need and, or the impact of jobs and the number of jobs and wages and how that impact happens. This is affectionately known as the Doolittle Quartile amongst the committee, Steve, but it really kind of provides a framework to understand what really we're going for here, and that would be the upper right, what's called the prime quadrant, where we're looking at projects with greater pay in higher quantity as those who would, that would impact the community at the greatest level. And I might mention that that impact in this policy is written more around the impact at the household level than it is at the mass payroll level, not to minimize the importance of that, but we believe, the committee believed, that the most credible, defensible, purposeful basis upon which to incite economic development was to improve the economic standard at the household level.
I just want to, just, I don't have a question, just a comment about the document. One, it keeps the potential company, it keeps them hungry with, that's always, that's always good, not to just have a, you bank the incentives and, you know, I can take my time now.
Right.
It's holding them accountable. The other thing it does, I was having a conversation with Steve earlier this afternoon, when you talk about the type of jobs, the higher skilled jobs, trying to land them, the colleges doing their part. There's opportunities there for individuals to up that skill level, so that when we land that company that requires a highly skilled workforce, the works, the works is being done, so I'm ready to go. And most importantly, it holds us accountable for taxpayers' dollars. And it's interesting to hear your philosophy on doing this, and I guess you'd have to be around here for a while to appreciate what's going on now as opposed to what happened in the past, and that's in the rear-view mirror moving forward. I think it's, this is well overdue, so.
Thank you.
Good work.
I just want to mention the opportunity for our local businesses that are expanding. There's, there are opportunities in this policy for us to be able to assist them if they're expanding and growing.
Yeah.
We hear that frequently.
That's true. Okay.
Good work.
Good job.
Well, again, thanks to the city staff, they're a phenomenal resource for us, and John and Steve and Jeff and Rick and all of them have done a great job with this, so we look forward to giving feedback, working collaboratively, and, you know, finding ways to continue to benefit the community, so.
And I think, you know, one of the important parts in this is about growing the wealth.
That's correct.
And so that's a good approach with economic development.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Do you want me to call the line?
Yes.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order adopting and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Barbecue on the River Incorporated for providing in-kind and available public resources, personnel, and right, public right-of-way needed for the success of the Barbecue on the River and fundraiser be adopted.
Second. City Manager, if you want to talk about the agreement.
Sure, we've been engaged for some time now in a, an effort to shore up or improve upon agreements that we have with various agencies that the city provides support to, primarily financial support. I believe we've had written agreements with recipients of financial support for a long time, not so much so with those that we don't, do not necessarily provide cash to, but may provide a lot of other support to. That defines the city's relationship with the Barbecue on the River Festival. The city provides in excess of $100,000 per year of in-kind support to help make that festival possible. So we now have prepared for your consideration in negotiations with the Board of Barbecue on the River, Inc., a, an agreement for the contribution that the city will make to that going forward, and I'm keeping talking here because I'm not finding my copy, but it's here. Thank you, I think I've got it, all right. So I'd like to make a few comments on the highlights of that agreement. Again, it's essentially the consideration on the part of the city would be the continued providing of various in-kind support services to the festival. Those range everything from the use of public right-of-way to city personnel to city equipment, much of which is in plain view for folks to see while they attend the festival, and really, I think, in all people's estimation, make, help make the festival possible. So we are, in a sense, formalizing that and formally recognizing the important relationship between the city and Barbecue on the River, and how that helps make the festival possible and all the benefits that accrue from it possible as well. This agreement will be for two years, commencing, it will be tomorrow, even though these dates, I don't know that that backdating is possible, but if it is, we'll do that, just a little technical checkpoint we have to make on that. It's intended to be a two-year agreement, obviously effective as soon as it's approved by both parties. I might mention that, as you would expect, this was negotiated completely in consultation with Barbecue on the River, and it is my understanding, as of Friday afternoon, that the board would find this acceptable in the form that you have it before you. Barbecue on the River is required to apply for a permit no sooner than 90 days in advance of the festival, and that's the permit that Mark Thompson's office issues, it's primarily a right-of-way access permit, a closing permit, but in the past, has included a small portion of the in-kind services. It's the standard permit that a lot of organizations use for use of city right-of-way. We are recognizing the ongoing role of the city in coordinating with Barbecue on the River for in-kind resources, and would recognize for purposes of sort of quantifying that going forward, the year of 2014, which would be last year, as the base year to compare the financial, how would you say it, to cost out the value of those in-kind services, we would use 2014 as a base year, and we have a full accounting for those services for both 2014 and 2013. And as I mentioned before, although I don't have that figure before me tonight, last year, it valued out at something just over $100,000. Importantly, as far as Barbecue on the River commitments to the city, Barbecue on the River, as they have done in the past most years, I believe, would send a representative of the city commission at some point after the festival to report on the festival, including the distribution of funds to nonprofits and the charities that the nonprofit support. There would be documentation that Barbecue on the River, Inc. would send to the city finance office yearly, and again, this is very similar to what we do with other organizations. We would need copies of current IRS forms, also a financial accounting that is signed off on by a qualified public accountant. Also provided to the city would be a list of all participating organizations and the amounts that were donated by the organizations. In this agreement, the city stipulates that a minimum of 20% donation would be required of food vendors, and make it clear that's not to discourage more than that, that's simply to set a bottom threshold, just so that the city has the ability to say conclusively that all food vendors are participating in that. As far as liaison and communication with the board, there is provision in here for the city to have an ex officio member of the board, that would be the city manager or his designee to the board. That designee could include department head or member of the city's professional staff. I think there's probably some logical, logic to be used in what positions that would be, that would be the most mutually beneficial between the city and Barbecue on the River Board. And those are the highlights. Take any questions you have.
I think it's a good agreement.
(Inaudible).
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
I'm abstaining.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Okay, we'll go to our ordinances. Adoption, Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a commercial guarantee loan instrument with Regent's Bank for the benefit of the Greater Paducah Economic Development Council. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the city of Paducah hereby authorizes the mayor to execute a two-year commercial loan guarantee instrument with Regent's Bank in the amount of $321,437.97 for a loan reissued to Greater Paducah Economic Development Council for the construction of the Information Age Park.
Second.
Any discussion? Everybody okay?
Yep.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the city of Paducah, Kentucky approving and authorizing the execution of a First Amendment to Agreement among the city of Paducah, Kentucky and Pepsi Mid-America Company for an exclusive beverage and snack provider service contract in Paducah Parks Facilities and authorizing the mayor to execute same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance authorizes the city of Paducah, Kentucky to approve and enter into a First Amendment to Agreement between the city of Paducah, Kentucky and Pepsi Mid-America Company granting an exclusive beverage and snack vending provider contract to Pepsi, which amends, modifies the nature and terms of the scoreboard contribution by Pepsi. This ordinance approves the form of the First Amendment presented to the Board of Commissioners of the city, which, with which changes therein shall be not, shall not be adverse to the city and may be approved by the mayor.
Second. Okay, City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the city of Paducah, Kentucky authorizing the mayor to execute Amendment Number One to the Design Agreement with the Department of the Army, represented by the District Engineer, U.S. Army Engineer, Louisville District for Design for the Ohio River Shoreline Paducah, Kentucky Reconstruction Project. This ordinance is summarized as follows, the city of Paducah hereby approves and authorizes the mayor to execute Amendment Number One to the Design Agreement with the Department of- Engineer, U.S. Army Engineer, Louisville District for Design for the Ohio River Shoreline Paducah, Kentucky Reconstruction Project. This ordinance is summarized as follows, the city of Paducah hereby approves and authorizes the mayor to execute Amendment Number One to the Design Agreement with the Department of the Army, represented by the District Engineer, U.S. Army Engineer, Louisville District for Design for the Ohio River Shoreline Reconstruction Project. This amendment modifies the original agreement to include not only Paducah Levy System Reconstruction Project Priority Number One, but Priority Number Two through Number Seven. Further, this agreement obligates the city to contribute 35% of the total design costs associated with a reconstruction project, which is projected to be approximately $2,281,925. Part of this amount can be credited by in-kind services by the city staff and/or city expenditures' resources.
Second.
City clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of Alert Alarm Systems of Paducah, Kentucky for the purchase and installation of an IP-based camera surveillance system for the Paducah Police Department and Rebuilding located at 1400 Broadway, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the city of Paducah accepts the bid of Alert Alarm Systems Incorporated in the amount of $34,782 for the purchase and installation of an IP-based camera surveillance system for the Paducah Police Department and Rebuilding located at 1400 Broadway, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Second. City clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and approving the purchase of certain tracts of real estate generally located at 501 North Third Street, Paducah, McCracken County, Kentucky, from Kentucky Holdings One LLC for a public purpose. This ordinance is summarized as follows, this ordinance authorizes the city of Paducah, Kentucky to purchase certain tracts of real estate generally located at 501 North Third Street, Paducah, Kentucky, McCracken County, for a public purpose from Kentucky Holdings One LLC, a Delaware corporation for a purchase price of $257,227.97.
Second.
City clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Ordinance introduction, we're going to have the city manager talk about our contract with Republic, Inc. for the recycling services.
We anticipate this to be a 12-month-plus arrangement. Time did not permit a formal solicitation that would have allowed a contract to be written for that full amount of time, given the minimum dollar thresholds that require a competitively bid contract. So for the first period of time, I am going to enter into an agreement with Republic within the amount of money that I'm allowed to do that, without that, it would not require commission action, and then the intention would be, as we approach that amount of money, that maximum, which is 20,000, that I would conduct a procurement process and then bring a contract before you to pass for the remaining period of time. So I wanted to make you aware of that, and comment just briefly on what's involved with this now and what I would anticipate in the future when we get to that point. It's a relatively simple contract that recognizes that Republic Services, Inc. will set up a drop point recycling option for the public at its current transfer station location within a designated area that the public can get to, know is there, and get to in as convenient of a manner as possible. It is specified, as you have seen in some of the material that's gone out in some of the previous discussions we've had, what materials will be accepted, so on and so forth. Importantly, the consideration between the two financially, on the part of Republic, will be the loading of single-stream recyclables and separated cardboard from the containers that they will put there into vehicles to be transported to either St. Louis or Union City, Tennessee. That will be done by contract, so Republic will be hiring someone to load from the repository containers out there and haul off of. So what this will actually be, will be a commitment on the part of the city to cover the cost of that loading and transportation as compensation to Republic for that. The other two aspects of it, once it gets there, of course, is the sorting process, which I believe Republic told us is costing them, was it somewhere around $20 a ton, something like that? And then whatever it is above or below water, that material is able to be sold for on the market, and a lot of it is below water level right now. So essentially, we are just concerning ourselves with the loading and transportation of materials from here to recycling facilities with the full knowledge and assurance that, in fact, the material is going to recycling facilities, which was verified by National Public Radio today.
Tell them, they can see the video.
Yeah, yeah. Coincidentally, I, when I was driving to work this morning, I heard a spot on National Public Radio actually commenting on the very facility that we visited in St. Louis, and Commissioner Rhodes later saw a video of the same thing. So we didn't dream it up, it's there, it's big, it's very, very impressive. So this will be the arrangement, at least for the first period of time here, and I would expect that we would formalize it once we hit the dollar threshold for the negotiated contract that we're going to use at the beginning here.
And we are, I want the public to know that we are still working toward curbside recycling in the future.
Yeah, we are, I expect to have another presentation ready for you in approximately three weeks. This effort is helping, I think, shed some light on some of the issues related to that as we move forward. Certainly, we're a little more astute to the marketing value side of recyclables now than we were a few weeks ago, and understand that better and understand amongst other things. And this was probably the biggest takeaway, I think, on that issue from our trip to St. Louis, was having it explained to us how the value of a lot of recyclables is associated with the value of crude oil on the international market. Isn't that something? Which is not something we control, obviously, but something that impacts all of us. So right now, as you all know, and we enjoy it at the gas pump, for sure, but the value of recycled plastics is probably at historical lows, we're very close to it right now, because of that in large measure, as I understand it. And that's about as far as I understand it, but if you accept that, you know, you have some ability to sort of relate things, and so that's where we are right now. We're at a period of time where the markets for recyclables are very low, and it's causing the cost part of it, if you will, to kind of come into the equation a little more prominently, or at least introduce to us maybe a little more realistically what some of the worst-case financial scenarios are as you look at this whole equation. So we're going to put a little more focus on that for our next presentation, but we continue to move forward.
Some of the things, though, that are right for the environment often do cost more. So, it's a philosophy. Okay, I just wanted to quickly say that I was out at the college this afternoon for the Orphan Train, it's the Community Read for the city of Paducah, and I encourage everyone out there to pick up a book. You can get paperback, our hardback books. The author is Christina Baker Klein, and it's a book about the trains that took children from different large cities out west into the Midwest. Many of them were adopted by families, but many of them wound up as servants in families. So it's a touching story and a good read.
Our class is currently reading that, so it is a really good book.
Yeah. And the orphan train did come through this area, through Paducah. So we have any, any comments?
No.
Okay, we have an executive session tonight, Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the board go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topic, issue which may lead to the appointment, dismissal, or disciplining of an employee as permitted by KRS 61-8101F.
Second. City clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye, and we will not be coming back, meeting's adjourned, and everyone have a wonderful Easter holiday.